All right, you all ready? We call this meeting to order. This is a commissioner meeting of October 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room on One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Deputy Director Space?
Here.
Right, number three is a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, number four is public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, as made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2025, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, and Strauss News, and is also posted on bulletin board maintaining Administrative Center for Public Announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronics. Commissioners, please lose your phones. Number five is the approval of agenda. We have a few amendments to tonight's agenda. Item seven will be removed to the end of the meeting following our second public comment period. We'll be adding in item 13A, which is introduction for first reading ordinance 25-06, Sussex County Local Park and Undetended Property Ordinance. In addition, items 12 and 14A will be tabled. All the commissioners, we got that? Right? Motion to approve agenda as amended?
So moved.
Mr. Henderson, Deputy Director Space seconds. Any discussion? Right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Okay, moving on. Six is proclamation certificates, presentations, there is none. Seven, as I said, will be moved. Eight is public hearing, there is none. Number nine is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. The floor is open for agenda topics only.
Kathy Brandon-Hanson Township. I just wanted to speak a little bit about, in 15 Resolution D, about the emergency elevator repairs. I was just wondering about the status of that kind of thing because I'm concerned about the seniors wanting to come for open enrollment and how that's going to affect that. And I know that a lot of the programs are changing and some of the prices for the programs are changing, so I want to make sure that, you know, the seniors are able to get the information they need and prepare for having to pay more money. And that's it, thank you.
Yes, we are prepared. We could do a lot of the services over the phone, so I also oversee directly the Rain Hance, the Division of Senior Services. So we do a lot of the counseling over the phone. We also have a table set up on the first floor, and then we can also go out to any one of our nutrition sites. There's one in Vernon, Franklin, and Hopeakon, and provide counseling sessions there. We know a lot of the programs are changing, our counselors are certified, and will help you maneuver which is the best program individually for you based on what your needs are.
Just to correct the record, the table is down on the parking level so that people can get to it easier.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Agenda topics? Okay. Motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space? Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Henderson?
Okay, I'm going to be pretty brief here. On September 25th, I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony of Project Self-Sufficiency for their new food pantry, allowing residents to pick items off the shelf rather than pre-bagged bags for them to take out for whatever they need. On September 25th, I attended an open space Zoom meeting where we discussed the new opportunities for municipalities to apply for grant money. On September 27th, I had the honor of riding in the Hopeakon Patriotism Parade. If you remember, it was rescheduled from June when we had torrential downpours. I will say, Hopeakon certainly brings out the residents in support for their community events. On October 2nd, I attended an economic development breakfast at Yerters Diner. It's always great to hear about various issues from various municipalities. Whether it's negative or positive, without this feedback back-and-forth dialogue, concerns are never resolved. On 10/4, I attended the Sussex County Fireman Parade in Montague. I'd like to first say thank you to Montague Fire Department for an outstanding job preparing for this parade. Anyone that's never been involved in this process, it's a year of hard work preparing and planning. Mother Nature doesn't always help the firemen when they're fighting fire, but she certainly did for the parade. To all the other county and out-of-county departments, thank you for your dedication, hours of training, and putting your life on the line to protect the residents of this county. The words "thank you" just doesn't feel like enough. On October 7th, seems like it's hard to believe we're in October already here. October 7th, Deputy Director Space and I attended the Mission Street Market Open House, as we had mentioned at another meeting. This is a fantastic organization that helps men only in Sussex County. It was great to see so many other agencies out there supporting them in their services, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hayden?
Yeah, last week I was alerted to an incident that occurred at the public safety building up over in Freyford by Director Tappan. I went there, saw the damage, memo to the furnace. However, the nice part of that was it was employee hurt quickly and acted fast, and we did not have a bigger incident. Maybe some kind of acknowledgement to that. Three weeks ago, we had the vigil for Charlie Kirk, and we had a lot of people show him. I see two from here. There you go. And the other thing we talked about, I'm not going to talk about, but we have people who are talking too much here. And we need to fix that because it's going to get us in litigation. That part of it we didn't have.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes. So, first, with our Sussex County Library System, families and educators can now explore newly created guiding reading book list at the Sussex County Library System, making it easier than ever to find books suited to each child's reading level. Based on Fontis and Pinell's guided reading levels, the lists help young readers build confidence and comprehension by organizing books by lettered levels, many of which align with local school assessments. These lists make it easy for parents to find books that fit right where their child is as a reader, said Deborah, who is the Youth Services Coordinator. It takes the guesswork out of picking a book and keeps reading fun instead of frustrating. Families can view the latest list at sussexcountylibrary.org/kids/hashhtag-guided-reading, or by visiting any Sussex County Library System branch, or calling 973-948-3660 for more information. Now, Division of Senior Services Caregiver Support Group. The Division of Senior Services will host a caregiver support group meeting virtually via Zoom on Thursday, October 16th, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. This group is designed to reduce caregiver stress and promote physical and psychological well-being. Participants will also receive information about available programs and services, how to access them, and necessary referrals. For more information or to register, call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288. There's also a peer support group for Sussex County veterans. All Sussex County veterans are invited to a monthly peer support group held on the fourth Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM. The next session will be on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on the first floor of the Sussex County Administrative Center in Newton. The welcoming gathering offers veterans a relaxed setting to connect, share experiences, and learn about the county programs and services. This program is sponsored by the County of Sussex. Learn more, register, call Division Services, Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1135. Finally, I was able to attend the Sussex County Fireman's Day Parade. It was an incredible celebration of our local heroes. I want to congratulate all of the award winners from the parade, and just say thank you to the firefighters, volunteers, and organizers who made the event a great success. Thank you also to Mayor Zeitone, Montague Council, and Montague Fire Department for the warm welcome. That's all. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Space?
Division of Senior Services 2025 Caregiver Expo. The Division of Senior Services will host its annual Caregiver Expo at the Farmstead Golf and Country Club, located at 88 Lawrence Road in Lafayette, from 3:30 to 6:30 on Thursday, October 23rd. The event is designed to offer resources and support to caregivers. There will be a variety of health and human services providers, businesses, and organizations that cater to the needs of seniors and their caregivers. To register your attendance or obtain additional information, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Medicare Open Enrollment, the 2025 Medicare Open Enrollment Period runs from October 15th through December 7th. The Division of Senior Services provides free assistance to Medicare beneficiaries to compare coverages and possibly change their Medicare plans for 2026 to meet their needs. This assistance is provided through the State Health Insurance Assistance Program, SHIP. Appointments are available via phone and in person. Individuals who need assistance evaluating their plan and making changes for those who wish to obtain additional information about this assistance should call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1223, to schedule an appointment with a certified counselor. Division of Community and Youth Services, open public portal for community engagement on opioid settlement funds. Sussex County residents are invited to provide input on how best to invest in the county's portion of the National Opioid Settlement Funds through a new online portal located on the county's website at sussex nj.us. The portal opened on October 1st and will be available for public comment through October 22nd. Community members are encouraged to share their voices and insights to help shape the future of our response to the opioid epidemic in an effort to protect the lives of people who are still here with us. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing will hold a women's health screening clinic on Thursday, October 23rd, from 4:30 to 7:30 at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. This service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program, NJSEED. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. A child health clinic will be held on Tuesday, October 28th, from 10 to 12, at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers complete physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunizations for children from birth to five years old. Services are free for those who are uninsured. To learn more about this clinic or schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. A health check clinic will be held on Tuesday, October 28th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. To learn more about this clinic or schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. Office of Mosquito Control. The county continues to experience an above-average activity of West Nile virus in adult mosquito populations. Currently, the county has found 58 positive pools of West Nile virus. This year's West Nile virus activity is highest for Sussex County since testing began in the early 2000s. Residents should be taking steps to avoid being bitten by infected mosquitoes by using EPA-registered insect repellents when outdoors, wearing long-sleeved shirts and long pants, and mosquito-proofing yards by emptying standing water after rainfall event. Cooler temperatures will not prevent mosquitoes from flying. Residents should continue preventative safety measures from mosquitoes through October. For more information, please visit the mosquito website at sussex nj.us/mosquito. And we still have the free-spotted lanternfly traps, and they are available to Sussex County residents. If you would like to receive a free trap, please call the Office of Mosquito Control at 973-940-5225 to schedule a pickup. Traps can be picked up at the mosquito control office on Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30, but scheduling an appointment is preferred to ensure staffing availability, and they are certainly bad because I see them all the time. And I also attended the Fireman's Parade with the other commissioners, and it was Montague's 75th anniversary, and I've gone to many Fireman's Parades over my lifetime, and for their first-time hosting, they did an excellent job. Everyone was worried with the logistics of not having like a major town center like Franklin, Newton, Sparta, but they did a wonderful job. And I also attended the Market Street Mission with Commissioner Henderson, and this board is committed to helping Newton and Sussex County with the homeless situation, especially here in Newton. It's the most visible. And that's all I have.
Thank you. The Department of Engineering Playing Sussex County Bridge X-20, Berry Road and Wantage. Sussex County Construction Crew completed construction of the abutments and bridge bearings at the Bridge X-20. The new bridge superstructure is scheduled to be delivered next week. Crews anticipate installation of bridge superstructure railing systems will occur by early November. Public Works will be paving the roadway, installing the guide rail system once the bridge superstructure has been installed, and we expect the bridge that will be returned into service by the end of December. New all-way stop sign at intersection 517 and Maple Grange, Rona, Vernon, although I did get some complaints about this yesterday, which is very odd because usually people are looking for four ways. The Sussex County Traffic Safety Construction Crew has completed construction and implemented a new all-way stop sign at the intersection of 517 and Maple Grange in Vernon, in Lounsbury Ala Road. The Sussex County Local Safety Action Plan was instrumental in assisting engineering in prioritizing the safety improvement. Sussex County Trails Grant Program, and I believe you'll be going to the meeting next, is it the end of the month? So you'll be able to talk about this a little bit more. Sussex County Open Space Advisory Committee has finalized recommendations for '26 solicitation of a Sussex County Trails Program. The grant program is funded by Sussex County Farmland Preservation, Recreation Open Space Trust Fund. The program awards grants for the construction, rehabilitation, restoration, and maintenance of publicly-owned and shared-use trails. Work must be located on permanently-preserved public land or within a permanent easement held in public entity. The program is open to all 24 municipalities, working individually or in partnership. The county and non-for-profit organizations establish to protect and manage specific natural resources. Final program rules are expected to be considered for the adoption by the Commissioner Board during our meeting on the 22nd, which will be our next meeting. Information on the program is available by contacting Sussex County Division of Planning, 973-579-0500. Sussex County Resurfacing Program. Division of Engineering has completed their analysis of bids received by 25 Sussex County Resurfacing Program, and the Division has determined the lowest responsive bid was submitted by Shifano Construction in an amount of $7,382,951.28. This grant is funded by the Transportation Trust Fund, and the work includes the milling and paving of 23.31 miles of county routes. Award of the contract is included on tonight's commissioner agenda. Once awarded, the county anticipates work could begin as soon as November and will be completed during the summer of '26 after a winter work shutdown. Again, information, if you're looking for any information, you could contact Engineering Planning at 973-579-0430. Sussex County Guide Rail Crew. The DPW Work Guide Rail Construction Crew continues to repair and upgrade damaged guide rail system along our county routes, and so far this year, we have completed 25 systems. Weather permitting, the crew will continue repairing damaged systems on priority basis. As a point of interest, the county owns and maintains over 1,500 guide rail systems. Division of Public Works also can be contacted at the same number, 973-579-0430. Division of Public Works crews are working on stabilizing our county routes for upcoming winter season. Work includes repairs and upgrades on the number of stormwater collection systems in inlet spots, asphalt repairs, which include milling and paving of distressed areas with the roadway, completion of the final mowing and sightline clearing for the year, and completion of open work tasks required for compliance with the Highway's Agency Stormwater Permit. That's enough for that. Just a clerk's report. Please report the revenue for the month of September 25 has increased by $42,133.40 from that of September of '24. The current fiscal increase to date is $173,364.70, higher than it was in September of last year. Daniel's Law. We are up 26 this month, and the total to year-to-date is 914, and our property alert system is 71 September in 1944 year-to-date. And that is all I have. All right. Number 11 is approval of consent agenda. There is none. Number 12, that was approval minutes, that was tabled. 13 is our ordinance that we amended. It's the introduction for first reading, which is ordinance 25-06, ordinance for Sussex County Local Park and Undetended Property Ordinance. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for the first reading, and also post the same on a bulletin board and lobby at the County Administrative Center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on October 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM prior to final adoption of this ordinance?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Okay, appointments in or resignations? Can I get a motion to adopt Resolutions A through D?
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot, have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
All right, 15 is resolutions. Motion to adopt resolutions A through Q.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space? Did I get a second? Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
All right, 16 is awards of contract change orders and bids. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that the adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public's interests. Motion to adopt resolutions A through C.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Okay. Financial, we have two bills list. Bills List A, Resolution A, Payment of Bills List from October 8th, 2025. Motion to pay Bills List A.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
All right, Resolution B is Payment of Bills List B from October 8th, 2025. Motion to pay Bills List B.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Abstained.
All right, number 18, personnel, there is none. Number 19, administrative report.
I'm just going to say we're working on the budget for 2026. We'll be starting to have the meetings with the commissioners set up so that we are in a timely fashion to meet all of our deadlines for next year, so I'll just put that out there for now.
Perfect, thank you. Number 20, county council report?
Nothing, sir.
Number 21, unfinished business, anyone? All right, number 22, new business. Anyone? I like this, this is good. 23, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on agenda topics, on non-agenda topics, I'm sorry. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those abstained, carries. The floor is open.
Good evening, Ken Collins, Andover Township. Thank you for moving the executive session. When I spoke to you at your previous meeting, it was in reference to the murder of Major Gulyadale by Newton Police Officers Steve Needle and Garrett Armstrong. The officers responded with deadly force rather than non-lethal force to a combat veteran who was having an episode of PTSD caused by Fourth of July fireworks on the holiday. More than six months before his murder, the NJ Attorney General issued Law Enforcement Directive Number 2020-14 to all county prosecutors. This directive, which I provided to you last time I was here, establishes countywide working groups in New Jersey to enhance law enforcement interactions with individuals experiencing mental health crises or disabilities. The county working groups, each county prosecutor must convene a working group to improve responses to individuals with mental health issues and disabilities. The group should include law enforcement, mental health professionals, and community advocates, and may collaborate regionally to optimize resources. There's supposed to be a statewide steering committee. The directive took effect on March 31st, 2021, more than six months before Gulyadale's murder, as I said. While I have reached out to this board and to the county prosecutor's office to find out where the county is concerning this important directive, nobody has provided verification that a county working group has been established or any more information at all, to that matter. Almost five years later, after the murder of a veteran by Newton Police, I hope you'll find out and let us all know. It's really important, and it's a directive from the New Jersey Office of the Attorney General. So I hope that something has been done, but I'm beginning to get a really big suspicion that absolutely nothing has been done.
One minute?
That this just went into the round file over there in the corner, and nobody did a thing. So if you guys would look into this and find out if there is a county working group and if the prosecutor's office has done anything, I know there's a new program from Atlantic Health that's arrived together, where they have mental health professionals that will arrive with the police in this situation. Is anything being done to liaison with them and get the police working with them? That would be what we should be doing. And lastly, Mr. Hayden, resign tonight. We've had enough. Nobody wants you here.
Okay.
Don't let the door hit you in the rear end on your way out.
So I guess you're a fascist, right? You don't believe in the rule of law.
You're guilty, sir.
Okay, sure. Okay.
You committed stolen valor. Admit it and go. Have a good night.
Good evening. It did not go unnoticed that the speakers are working very well and the mics are working very well. Thank you. Appreciate that. And also, I'd like to thank you for moving your executive meeting also to the end of the meeting.
Ma'am, could you state your name and municipality for the record? That's okay.
Sorry, Dormin Edwards, Highland Lakes, New Jersey. And what I wanted to talk about tonight is the state, the fiscal state of New Jersey. I've been doing some research, and I know you're getting ready to do some budget work, so I just want you to keep in mind that New Jersey is really not in a good financial position right now. I don't know if anybody is aware of a nonprofit Chicago-based accounting firm called Truth in Accounting, and they go through all the states and find out how they are doing fiscally. And New Jersey is, well, they call it sinkholes. And the five worst sinkhole states are led by New Jersey and Connecticut. And what it goes on to say is half the United States does not have enough money to cover And what it goes on to say is half the United States does not have enough money to cover their bills according to a new report published by the nonprofit Chicago-based Truth in Accounting. At the end of fiscal twenty-twenty-four, which most states go from July first to June thirtieth, it says twenty-five states are unable to cover all their financial obligations according to their Sixteenth Annual Financial State of States Report. And so that's concerning to me. You know, all states except for Vermont, from what I understand, if the information that I get online is true, do not require to have a balanced budget. So Vermont somehow seems to be able to do that. And they have to shift costs from different areas, from future taxpayers, you know? We've got to think about our upcoming generation, what they're going to be strapped with. And...
One minute.
Thank you. So according to their ranks, they ranked each state according to a taxpayer burden, dividing the numbers of taxpayers into the state's budget shortfall and taxpayer surplus dividing the number of taxpayers into state budget surplus. States with taxpayer burdens are called sinkhole states and states with surpluses are called sunshine states. And as I said, the worst five sinkhole states are led by New Jersey and Connecticut, each with taxpayer burdens of forty-four thousand five hundred dollars if each taxpayer had to contribute. That's crazy. So I just want to say, as you look towards setting up your budget, I know you'll be fiscal-minded and do the right thing. I hope. It's just getting very expensive to live in the state of New Jersey. And I hate to pack. I really don't want to pack. So hopefully we'll get a change of regime because since Governor Murphy was in, the budget increased sixty-seven percent.
Time.
Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening. And I'd like to take some of that speed reading you guys do.
My name is Brian McCurdy from Branchville, New Jersey. In late twenty-seventeen or early twenty-eighteen, I forget, of an illegal investigation by the U.S. government, namely the FBI. Since that time to present, I and my loved ones have been victims of ongoing criminal activity orchestrated by some individuals within the FBI and potentially other agencies. This criminal activity includes theft, fraud, attempted murder, assault, threats of violence, coordinated slander, reputational destruction, threats of income loss, causation of income loss, corporate espionage, and other commercial criminal activity that constitute organized crime and domestic terrorism under federal and state statutes. In late twenty-seventeen, there was a growing concern among parents like myself in the online community about potentially widespread child trafficking and in particular, potential government involvement in widespread child trafficking. My discoveries were shocking. I lost sleep over it sometimes. That was the story everywhere. Parents all around the country online were saying they lost sleep over to realize that slavery was alive and well and that people could use children this way. What I didn't know at the time was that this chat group included informants commissioned by the FBI tellingly to conduct counterintelligence or spying operations on people who wondered too much or too loudly about government corruption. I was very vocal, shared a lot of thoughts. For time I'll skip. These people certainly appeared to be friendly and interested in these things at first, but they were too friendly. There were too many coincidental moments of having similar interests and having conversations that just seemed to magically align with other things going on in my life. They seemed to know things. And I didn't know at the time, they did know things. At first thought, maybe I just ran into people I really got along with, but they were the first examples of many that I eventually ran into where people obtained knowledge of personal situations and experiences and used that information to fake common sentiments and thoughts and then subsequently use that information and falsely earn trust of mind to conduct criminal acts of fraud and much worse. It is my observation, assertion, and claim that some individuals within the FBI choose targets like myself under false pretenses and utilize intelligence assets or people who are equipped with pieces of personal information, some real and some fake, that they should not otherwise have in order to stalk, taunt, threaten, bribe, coerce, and overall to control both for political purposes and to conduct additional organized criminal activity. This is not a political complaint. They came after my children. They came after me. We've suffered covert and overt acts of fraud, terror, and violence. I've tried restarting my life and living in peace, but they persisted and pursued and frankly seem to have a hard time letting go of me. These are not typical criminals who are typically afraid of prosecution. They're mentally deranged agents of the U.S. government who should be fighting crime instead perpetrate it and terrorize their targets for noticing it. I was here not too long ago talking about smaller crime in scope. I didn't want to mention something so big. I have since brought it up to law enforcement.
Time.
Not the great Sheriff's Department. I wish I was under your jurisdiction, but I will continue to use the public forum to educate and inform and raise my voice on this issue. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick DiVerdi Bresio. I'm from Augusta. I wanted to talk about something else, but the lady mentioned the fact that the state's fiscal situation is in grave danger. And that kind of surprised me because as a former bond counsel for the state, I had been reading recently that the state's bond rating just got upgraded in August and September by Moody's, Kroll, and S&amp;P. And I'll just read you a section of it. It says here, upgraded the state's rating to A-plus citing progress in rebuilding reserves and addressing debt and pension challenges according to newjersey.com. Moody's says upgraded New Jersey's general obligation bonds to double-A-three from A-one citing a strong surplus full pension contributions, growing tax revenue and the ability to absorb economic downturns. Now, I think personally that the real problem we have in New Jersey long-term is pension liability, right? When I used to do the disclosure documents for the state, we started raising that issue many years ago because people are just living longer. You know, my father's ninety-one years old and he's been collecting a pension as a teacher, former teacher, for almost thirty years. And when they did the accounting for that, they expected him to work till sixty-five and die at sixty-eight. So that's, you can see there's a gigantic mismatch. And I think that's probably what you were talking about, long-term. Short-term, I think we're in better shape. But what I would ask you to do is consider where the biggest risks are. And Commissioner Space mentioned before two things, homelessness and healthcare for people who don't have adequate private insurance. I've had a wonderful private insurance. I've never had to worry a second myself about my personal situation, my family. Until recently, when I'm dealing with my sister who has no, very little insurance. And it's been shocking to me how little she has covered. And that's made me realize that's a huge problem for people, particularly here in Sussex County. So to the extent that you can keep those programs funded, where people can get free vaccines, they can get free healthcare when they can't afford it themselves, and these are working people. My sister works sixty hours a week and still can't afford good healthcare. She takes care of autistic children. There's not a lot of money in that business. So I would ask you to focus on that and also healthcare for homeless people. If homeless people get sick, we're not going to throw them, we're going to care for them, but it's going to be much more expensive when we have to bring them in through the emergency rooms. So I know that's a tough burden for us to meet as taxpayers, but if I have to say where my tax money should go, it should go to that, those types of programs more than anything else. The least among us need the most help. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jean Aubriage, Hampton Township. I'm here tonight to ask Sussex County voters how your vote for Republicans turned out for you in the last election. Not just your vote for Trump. We all know that he is at an all-time low in popularity. But Republicans down the ticket as well. Grocery prices are higher. Millions of Americans are about to lose affordable healthcare. Many college graduates can't find jobs. Small businesses are closing because of Trump's tariffs. Farmers are selling their lands because of Trump's tariffs. The increase in manufacturing in the U.S. is a pipe dream. There's no wall. There's no end in sight for the war in Ukraine. There's no end in sight for the conflict between Israel and Hamas. The military is being deployed in U.S. cities against American citizens. The Trump administration is actively creating a police state. And the government is shut down even though Republicans control the House, Senate, and the White House. Trump, his administration, and Republicans in Congress lied about being able to solve these problems and even made them worse. And they continue to lie to the American people every single day. The outcome of this election in New Jersey has beyond our little towns, small county, and state. We are a bellwether for the nation. This election is literally a contrast between saving our democracy and becoming a dictatorship. The people who sit in front of us have been silent as we have seen our federal government officials reject the rule of law, dismantle our institutions, and create chaos across the country. Worse, they have actively taken away our freedoms by limiting our right to free speech and assembly in the very heart of our county, the Newton Green, our county seat. They should be ashamed of themselves. So again, I ask our county residents, how did your vote for Republicans turn out for you in the last election? This November, make your voice of discontent heard. Vote for Democrats down the ticket. Even if you are not completely satisfied with the Democratic Party right now, we need to stop the Trump regime and Republicans from destroying our republic. This is a dangerous moment in our democracy. Do your part to protect it. Every vote counts. Vote for Democrats Mikey Sherrill, Eugene Grinberg, Steve Barrett, and Phil DiStefano. And write in Michelle Van Allen for Commissioner because you can vote for two candidates for Commissioner. But whatever you do, do not vote for any Republicans because they will take away your rights, just like they did in the Newton Green.
Good evening.
Andy Pender, Friedon Township. I also really appreciate you guys pushing the executive session at the end. It makes a difference. I wanted to talk tonight. I know Commissioner Hayden, you had mentioned Charlie Kirk. And I want to talk a little bit about active shootings and just so many recently, including the high-profile shooting of Charlie Kirk. How do we as a community be proactive rather than waiting for this to hit close to home? I know active shooter drills are done frequently in schools with our students and law enforcement, but those are reactive. This is what we do once an event is in progress. What is happening as a community to identify and thwart potential shooters before they act? Again, I know there is law enforcement monitoring online posts for any types of threats, but how do we reach those people before they get to online or in-person threats? Is it mentorship with at-risk youth or any youth for that matter? How do we connect with people on a personal level that need help, particularly people who need mental health assistance? I don't know what the answers are, but I do know leadership from the top matters. A president that is incendiary and that keeps the hornet's nest stirred up just perpetuates these events. The Second Amendment is ingrained and important, but we need reasonable gun control. National leadership is actively targeting the radical left despite facts that the majority of shootings in the past have not been carried out by the so-called radical left. We need leadership to provide the facts and truth to citizens, not unfounded blame nor wild speculation. Facts are required and matter because we can keep bumping along reacting to all these tragedies or we can use our energies to figure out why this keeps happening and then work together to provide positive actions. Thank you. I appreciate it.
David Dewett, Hampton Township. I appreciate your efforts. I really do. Violence. Donald Trump loves violence. Next to lying, bribery, and extortion, violence is the dear leader's favorite tool to gain power. Not true? Consider a sampling of his own words. November twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, talking about a heckler in his audience. Maybe he should be roughed up. February one, two thousand sixteen. If you see somebody getting ready to throw a tomato, knock the crap out of them, would you? February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. I'd like to punch him in the face. As times moved on, he has upped his game to more extreme suggestions other than simple assault. May twenty-nine, twenty twenty. When the looting starts, the shooting starts, all with a smirk on his face. June, twenty twenty. Couldn't you just shoot them? Just shoot them in the legs or something? Unless he is raping or assaulting women, Trump is a master at giving license and encouragement to others to carry out acts of violence. He claims no responsibility for instigating. His most consequential prod to action, September twenty-nine, twenty twenty. Stand back and stand by. Set the stage for January sixth, Trump's Day of Love. And that's a quote, which he spent mostly watching his patriots on television beating Capitol Police with flag poles. The list goes on and on, but I only have three minutes. Now he has achieved his ultimate dream, unlimited unchecked power. Our city streets are flooded with masked ICE thugs and then the National Guard to protect them. As Hitler achieved ultimate power by burning down the Reichstag, one can only wonder if Trump plans to invoke the Insurrection Act of eighteen oh-seven. Should a provoked incident give him the opportunity? Should Trump's acolyte, Jack Citirelli, be elected? Maybe we can look forward to protesters on the Newton Green being met with, quote, "very heavy force" at the hands of the National Guard from another state. Speak up. Tell the truth. Resist. And by the way, the only balanced budget in my recent past was Bill Clinton's. And the great big beautiful bill is going to cost us all trillions of dollars.
Amy Laney Lafayette. Thanks for the support. I'm just going to continue with this theme. So I'm going to speak English, not German, but warning signs of fascism. Warning signs of fascism. Autocratic regimes rarely seize power in a single democratic moment. Instead, they erode democracy in simultaneous steps that overwhelm opposition. Here are the ten steps to autocracy and authoritarianism. This is from Professor Kim Lane Shepherdler. Eins, win the last fair election. Autocrats often rise through elections and then ensure that it's your last one. Two, expand executive power. Push presidential authority beyond legal boundaries. Drei, capture the other branches. Co-opt Congress and neutralize the courts. I'm not sure if any of this is sounding familiar, if we can see parallels here to what's going on in this moment. Vier, gut the civil service. Remove competent government workers and break government so it doesn't work. Fünf, install loyalists. Fill key posts with people willing to ignore the laws and the needs of the people, all people. Sechs, attack the media. Discredit independent journalists and voices and replace them with propaganda. Sieben, scapegoat communities. Target immigrants. Target minorities. Target marginalized groups. And attack DEI. Acht, destroy support systems. Undermine institutions that defend and educate our communities. Neun, normalize violence. Militarize law enforcement and incentivize political violence. Zehn, end democracy itself. Manipulate elections and systems to guarantee permanent power. Guten Abend, vielen Dank.
Hello again.
Can you state your name and municipality?
Yes, Jeffrey Hall, Northern Bemidwe. It looks like we all have the same thing. I watched with astonishment as piqued this one fat, out-of-shape, unshaven leader of the greatest military ever assembled in front of our allies and enemies. Donald would follow. During the weave, he clearly explained we must be prepared for the attack of the enemy. I'm all for that. I'm ready to repel enemies, terrorists, the Chinese, the Russians, any other adversaries. Little did I know that the threat was not with these enemies. It was from within. It was us Americans, our people, especially those who reside in the cities. Even if they were not a threat, we could use them as a training exercise. Donald always has a great plan. Was hoping we would get better understanding of the threat within. At the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Navy's, of the Navy, Trump bombastically declared himself in the best physical shape of all recent presidents. That included Bush, Obama, and of course Biden. He then went on to state in a threatening tone, we must take care of this little gnat on our shoulder called the Democrats. This was followed by veiled threats directed at protesters. Other concerns were later addressed with Donald floated the idea on the use of using the Insurrection Act of eighteen oh-seven, allowing him to engage military action against American citizens. I realize we may be safe right now because it has only been used once, and that's during the Civil War. Additionally, the Capitol can be stormed by thousands who were fueled by the words of a defeated president. Protesters, Democrats, journalists, comedians, professors, commissioners, homeless, tax dodgers, gnats? This is without precedent. Just a historic perspective for some of my students.
Time.
And state, four students were shot. Nine killed.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. Um, I'd like to reiterate some of what people already said, but I'd also like to take it to the local level. Elections matter everywhere. Elections matter in this county. Look at what happened at, at one of the other elections. We ended up with the commissioner, who basically ended up with being worthless and indicted. And of all things, stolen valor, which is one of the worst things that anyone can do. So I urge everyone to be careful and very thoughtful with, for who they're voting for. I know of this person for many years, not a friend, but I know of this person for many years, and I can tell you from my experience, which is very limited, I would have never in a million years thought of voting for this person for a commissioner. I know what this person's like, and I knew exactly what to expect. Nothing but trouble and bullying and nonsense and a total waste of taxpayer money. And I think you people who were on the board before and agreed with this man running need to really rethink what you want in a good candidate. Thank you.
John Snyder, Sandiston. All I can say is wow. Fiery rhetoric that we've heard here tonight. Is it any wonder that some people on the edge have resorted to physical, political violence? Charlie Kirk is one. Donald Trump has had at least two that we know of assassination attempts. Illegal aliens being able to vote. Those of us on the right want voter ID. Apparently those on the left, for whatever reason, do not. Yet we have had someone in the past, recent past, Ian Andre Roberts, an illegal alien and a registered Democrat. If you recall his name, he was making two-hundred-eighty-six thousand dollars a year as a school superintendent in Des Moines, Iowa. Wonderful man with a checkered background. Arrested a number of times, illegal loaded weapons in his vehicle. Wonderful person, though. Picture here, he's from Guyana. I have no, no problem with Guyana, but I do have a problem with people who will tolerate letting people come into this country unvetted. Who knows when we're going to have another terrorist attack from the millions that have been let in? Some of the language, well, I'm going to, another name. We hear fascist words being thrown around quite a bit. Does anybody remember Nina Jankowicz? Three years ago, the Department of Homeland Security put her in charge of the disinformation board. And if you don't think that's a fascist idea, to have a disinformation board from the Department of Homeland Security to come down against people like me, a proud MAGA person...
One minute.
I don't know. Had to look up some of the things that fascists believe in, and one of them is having individual rights. They believe in the majority favoring the government. Someone mentioned also about the shutdown, whilst the Schumer shutdown, as far as I'm concerned. It has nothing to do with the fact that we have the White House, the Senate, and the Congress. In the Senate, you need sixty votes to pass this. Around fifty-five, I believe, right now, and it is the Democrats who are refusing. Pass the continuing, was it CRA continuing resolution? Which apparently, under the Biden administration, the same thing came up and it went through, passed. Time is up. Thank you.
This book.
Sir, can you just state your name and municipality?
Regis Hodo, Frankfurt Township, For God and Country. This book is the foundation, this holy Bible, of our country, the founding fathers. The hatred here of Trump is against Christianity. Charlie Kirk was assassinated. Reagan was almost killed. And Trump also almost killed. We look at all our democratic cities, look at them. Look at the mess we're in. How could you be a Democrat and not fight your own party if it's a just party? It's amazing to me what's happening to this country. And also, New Jersey. Tell me a, a governor in any other state that has more power than the governor of New Jersey. He can overrule almost everything we do. That's why it's important to elect a man for us, or a woman for us, for this county, for this whole country. And that's all I have to say.
Good evening. Nina Freo from Montague. I'd like to share this post from a Black, uh, Ken Blackwell that I found on X. This man is seventy-nine years old. Most men his age are slowing down, retiring, or living out their days in comfort, but not him. He works until two in the morning, often running on only four hours of sleep. While others his age are enjoying their golden years, he's carrying the weight of an entire nation on his shoulders. He doesn't take a salary. Every single quarter he gives, he gives it away to causes that serve the American people. He could be cashing in for billions, because, let's be honest, he already proved he knows how to build, create, succeed in business. He had the empire, he had the fame, he had the wealth, and he walked away from it all. Why? Because he loves this country more than he loves comfort. Because he sees freedom slipping away. Because he sees liberty under attack. Because he sees you and me, ordinary Americans, being ignored, silenced, pushed aside by the elites who only care about themselves. So he makes the choice most people wouldn't dare to make. He leaves behind his private life, his family's quiet peace, his businesses, and even his own safety. He steps into the storm, and since that moment, he endures endless attacks, fake investigation, lies, betrayals, and hatred from those who despise the idea of a president who actually fights for people instead of fighting for the swamp. And yet he never quits. He never bends the knee to the globalists, the media, the political class. He stands firm, not just for his own name, but for the promise of America itself. He fights for secure borders. He is winning on trade. He fights to back jobs, rebuild manufacturing, and restore strength for our military.
One minute.
He fights to give Americans hope, again. And still today, while others rest, he works late into the night. He sacrifices sleep, comfort, and ease, because his mission isn't finished. His mission is to protect freedom. His mission is to secure liberty. His mission is to put America first. This is not the story of an ordinary politician. This is the story of a man chosen for this moment in history, and his name is Donald J. Trump. He is the forty-fifth and forty-seventh president of the United States, thank God. And no matter how hard they try, no matter what they throw at him, no matter how many obstacles they place in his path, he remains our president. Thank God he's in the White House. Thank God we have a fighter. And thank God we have Donald J. Trump.
Time.
You guys got Iron Constitution. I applaud you for that. So I'll keep mine short. A lot of stuff being said tonight about authoritarianism. Kind of think back to about five years ago. I remember that we were forced to stay home. I remember when the senior senators were forced to take in COVID patients. I remember when we had all those deaths just down the road. I remember when I couldn't go to church, but I could get liquor. I remember when the entire state of New Jersey was forced to shut down, but that's not authoritarian. I would say, a lot of what I've heard about Trump tonight, and I, I don't want to get into a rhetoric type of thing, he said, she said, here's the thing, he's the President of the United States. We should all be hoping for his success, because his success is our nation's success. Those who want to see and want to complain that he's doing X wrong or Y wrong, I would encourage you to check where you're getting your information, because in reality, the information that you're getting is slanted from the left and from the right. So you need to be independent, and you're not. Because if you were, you wouldn't be sitting up here trying to attack the man. Instead, you would be looking around. You'd be seeing the success that our country has enjoyed, the wars that have been stopped. When countries ask the Nobel Peace Prize Commission to consider President Trump, you've got to wonder, why are they doing that? Maybe, maybe, just maybe, he's actually doing something to fix the world, because the world is not a safe place, and he is trying to do that.
One minute.
Thank you for listening. God bless you.
Motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business.
So moved.
Director Space, any discussion?
Aye.
All right. Twenty-four, Christina.
Number twenty-four, resolution regarding providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve et cec. Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B. And whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B and NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B as designated below. Item number four, matters relating to the collective bargaining agreements, CWA ten thirty-two. Item number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship personnel. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board expects to not take formal action after returning from executive session, except to adjourn the public meeting.
Thank you. Um, motion to adjut, executive session resumed.
Second.
To executive session, the board moves. Mr. Green, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We were going to be a long time, hence why the executive session is at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Get home, save.
Thank you.